Travis, are you in labor today?
She's pretty good.
Yeah. Is that your stress?
Yes.
Oh, it's your question.
That's pretty good.
I mean, he's quite a bit older actually.
Richard, here, um, you're, yeah, you're talking about stress.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
We read, I'm gonna read.
Yeah, bet.
What?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's tight. You can't back up. Spend this year at your place on the gas.
What's the weather looking like?
Good.
Let me get it.
It's just more than jam.
I was taking it for some reason. I don't know.
I go to, I don't know.
Sort of two building itself.
Looks like they were there for God.
Because I didn't want.
You know, that's the other thing.
I'm like thirty, fifty.
You know, more would you don't know.
Yeah, it does. We, we took, um, department. There's firehouse.
I guess I remember where the ashes.
And then I don't know.
Peggy's, you had me.
I do sit with one.
Oh, yeah. It was definitely.
They go together.
No, it's really, I, I.
Okay, six oh three, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um, we have, I mean, I have my.
It's the second Tuesday was here, so I couldn't.
Oh, okay. Well, there is a flag on top, yeah, I'd like to start by, we could pledge. It's behind you, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. It's very encouraging to see so many people here that care about our community. I, I find it very encouraging that you are all here. So, um, I know that many of you are here because of zoning, and so I would like to welcome our guests. We have our planning consultant, Ruben Schau. He's from Beckett and Raiders. Cindy is our recording secretary, Curtis is our zoning administrator. And then this evening, we have with us Nicole Assad. Nicole is our township council. She works in the practice of, what, Seber?
Bachminta, I'll just say Bachminta.
Bachminta. Um, it's a, a practice that represents a lot of townships in Michigan and in fact, their general council for Michigan Townships Association, which kind of guides our, um, they're kind of our guide how we do things. So, um, I asked Nicole, that's why I'm late starting, I asked Nicole if she would, um, give like a little overview at the beginning. Uh, I wanna alleviate any tensions you may have. The, the planning commission this evening will not be voting on for or against repealing zoning. That is not how the process works. Um, we'll have some deliberations about it, a public hearing gets set and so forth. There's a number of steps. But, um, after listening to all the public comment last night at the board meeting, which I'm thankful to see again, so many faces, familiar faces, I am determined to take every opportunity to educate on the process. And so I asked Nicole, and she has agreed, to give us a little overview of how the repeal will work. For those of you who have looked at the banks township.net site, there is a clickable link where you can open checklist for zoning. And that outlines a process, um, that's about seven pages. Tonight, we're at two A, so we're just beginning this process. But, um, that's a reference that you can, can look at, so you can educate yourself about that. But I, this is not a back and forth answer time or a question time for Nicole. She's just agreed to outline the process, so going forward, you know what to expect. So, with that, I would welcome Nicole to share a little bit about checklists and zoning repeal.
And your sort of team need to create. My name is Nicole Essid. I am township attorney for Banks Township. Uh, I worked at the firm Bachminta. They tech law at Young Graham and Wendley, um, who used to be the township attorney as well. I live in the area and from the area, I'm from up north. Um, I've worked with Banks Township before at, um, Young Graham and Wendley as well. So I'm not a new face, but some of you might not recognize me. Um, as for the zoning repeal that township board has decided that to go through with, um, that process, one, you can start at township board level, they can initiate that process, just like a zoning amendment. Um, so zoning amendments and the zoning repeal kind of follow the same procedure. Um, you have an initiation process, this time the township board initiated it. It then goes to the planning commission for a public hearing. Um, tonight, we will be setting that public hearing for a date and time. And at that public hearing, we will be able to take comments, um, both written and oral, about, you know, what the residents feel like and how they feel about the repeal of the zoning and that, or that amendment. Um, after that, that recommendation will go back up to the, um, planning commission, uh, or, I'm sorry, that go back up to township board. Um, it also gets sent off to the county planning commission, they'll make comments sometimes, uh, most of the times, they don't make comments. Um, and then the, the township board will be able to vote to whether they wanna adopt that ordinance or not, repealing the zoning ordinance. Um, there's a lot of notices that have to go out, so I'm not gonna bore you with that, but there's notice requirements that we have to do, so you have to have, so all of you guys will know what's going on. Um, I would suggest checking the website and checking the newspaper, that's, um, of general circulation, which is.
What's our general circulation newspaper?
Anthem Review.
Okay.
Anthem Review.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was one in the Charlotte or not. So the Anthem Review is generally the newspaper of general circulation for Anthem County and for Banks Township. So check that, there will be a notice there, um, about the time, date and place for the public hearing. Um, because it's, it's a overall repeal, if there's not gonna be mailed out notices, so you're not gonna get anything in the mail, but you wanna get, you know, you wanna check the website and the newspaper. Um, those have to be out and posted, um, check the posting board here as well, um, 'cause those are gonna be posted there. Those will be posted at least fifteen days prior to the public hearing, um, so you have time to kind of plan and, and say, yep, I can make it, or I can get a babysitter if you need one. Um, and then that's for the public hearing. Um, and then once the township, if the township board decides to adopt the ordinance, um, to repeal the zoning, there's a process to where, um, the residents can, can submit a petition for a referendum. So, there's that process as well. Um, but it, like I said, and if, if the referendum process is also on that checklist, if you wanted to look at that. Um, I don't remember that off the top of my head, but, um, there's a petition process, then, then it'll go to the general electors and you would vote on if you wanna keep your minimum ordinance or not. Okay?
Thank you, Nicole. That's helpful. Um, okay, so at that time, that's all we have to say about that. As you can see, we're just beginning the process and it's gonna take a bit. So, uh, the only thing I wanted to say is, at the public hearing, for those of you who want to speak on zoning, it's gonna be really important that you come back and attend that. Your name will be recorded, your comments will be recorded, and you don't have to be present, you can write, um, write something and send it to the planning, send it for the public hearing. So that'll be a matter of public record as well. So. Okay, um, you have, did, did everybody get minutes? Minutes, okay. And there was amended minutes that came out.
Just the last minute.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so at this time, I would take a motion to approve the minutes as, as presented.
One more motion.
Okay, Dave makes a motion.
I'll support.
Okay, I'll let David say aye. Aye, pose. All right, um, on announcements, I want to make sure that it's recorded Cindy in our record, that we have receipt of, um, a site plan review, yes, Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, and.
You mean for the S U P?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got a packet tonight of what's, what's being requested on a special use.
Okay, that's someone around this table and you're off.
Yeah, it's right there in your room.
Okay.
We just got it.
Okay. All right, very good. I just wanted the people to know that we received it. Of course, it can't go on our, our agenda tonight, but it'll be part of all the new business.
Well, it just needs to be, the process on that is, they, the, the people that, that want to get a, uh, use their property as a special use, this is a secondary section under their, under their, um, zoning district. They need to apply for a special use permit, or in this case, it happens to be for, uh, storage buildings. And, uh, so they fill out the paperwork and the application, pay the fee, I look at it, I receive it, and then I pass along to the planning commission, who will then review it. They'll, you will review it, and then you will set a pub, a date for a public hearing for that special use.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for outlining that process. I just didn't have anywhere else in the agenda to put that as, I wanted them to know that we received that and we will put that on the business.
You should be able to, it should be a, a short process for you, I mean, you can all take a look at it, but it's, it's pretty complete. And, uh, and again, you're, you're, what you need to do tonight is, since it does, appears to be all complete, that he submitted, they have submitted what they, what they need, um, just to, to set the public hearing to, uh, to review the special use permit, so that they come in and, you know, we do the whole thing. Yep, am I clear or am I unclear?
But that happens at next meeting, correct?
Well, yeah, how many days, Cindy?
We don't have enough time to get a public hearing for the eleventh, so we have to be on, yeah, either, yeah, either a special meeting on the twentieth, or it'll have to be in the December meeting.
The reason we got it into you tonight is so that we would get, they could get it in soon enough, because anybody that's trying to do a job this time of year that involves concrete or anything like that, they, they'd like to be able to get at it while they, you know, before winter. So, so they got me, the, unfortunately, this meeting got pushed back a week from what it was going to be, and, uh, so that might screw the timing up, but, well.
Okay.
So, we might, we could, we shouldn't be that big of a deal, so we could not hold it back.
Don't.
No, you can't do that.
There, there are notice, there are notices that have to go out for special use permits, there's a public hearing you have to set, so, um, no, you, you can, you, you have it in your packets, you can, you can review it, but you can't really talk about it or do anything with it tonight, because you have to do the, the notices, um, and there's a findings effect, and we have to make sure the standards are met and all of that stuff. So, there's a little bit more to it than, than just reviewing it and giving it a yes or no.
No, it's not a yes or no, it's a matter of setting.
So, they don't necessarily need a public hearing. If it's on the next agenda, they can put it up.
Oh, on, at that, the public hearing, maybe on that, at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we wanna do a special meeting to?
No.
Speed it up, no?
I, I haven't laid eyes on it at all, so.
Okay.
I need to do my.
Just do the, just do the next meeting.
Okay.
That's fair.
Okay.
It also says here estimated start date with purchasing in November twenty twenty five of the storage containers themselves and installing them in April of twenty twenty six. So.
We got time.
Like I said, the short version is, they just like to be able to get started, and as most of you builders know.
We all knew when it was coming. If they turned in their paperwork late, and the meeting is a week later than it should have been, they.
You said paperwork presented up, right? Before this?
We got it Thursday.
Yeah, I got it.
We go until this past Thursday, so.
Well, we had the paperwork, we just didn't have the check yet. So I'm not gonna bring you guys the paperwork until somebody's giving me the money for it, so I had to wait for the money before we could go for this, so.
So that's.
Just how it is.
Okay. All right, uh, any, uh, Cindy, any correspondence from?
I have, we need any now.
Okay, I, we all did get a letter from Hannah, but I believe she's here.
You can not even read it out loud if you want, I can just talk through a couple of comments.
Okay, yes, I'll, um, okay, so at this time, it's time for public comments, this is our time to hear what you have to say, and your time to, um, hear what each other has to say, so it's not a back and forth. Any public comment this evening?
I can start first then.
Okay, yeah.
Just to fight the bullet, I guess. So I did provide a letter, but, um, I did speak yesterday at the, um, board meeting as well, but I didn't say everything I wanted to say yesterday, so I did write some notes and wrote what I wanted to say tonight as well. Um, uh, so with that said, um, so my name is Hannah, I am a Banks Township resident. My husband and I just had our first child, and I'm really looking forward to raising our family here in a place that feels familiar and safe. I grew up in the U P, and what drew me to Banks Township was a small-town rural character. It reminded me of home, and exactly the kind of place I wanted my child to grow up in. I believe in zoning, I have a background in construction management and urban regional planning, and I work in community development. But I'm here tonight as a resident, because this is our home and we plan to be here for a long time. I'm really concerned about the proposal to remove zoning, I think it would hurt the community that so many of us love. You always tend to hear more from people who don't like something than from those who are fine with it. I never came to a meeting before, because I like our zoning, it works. You haven't heard from me, because I'm satisfied. But where you did hear from me was through the master plan survey, which I completed. The survey was supposed to help guide decisions like this, so where is that draft? Where's that data that shows how residents really feel about zoning? And it's on the agenda, the same agenda that is reviewing the master plan tonight. Under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, zoning ordinance and amendments must be based on a plan. That means the township master plan should guide any major zoning decisions, including repeals. Since our master plan is finalized, moving forward with repeal right now doesn't align with the intent of that law or with good planning practice. Repealing zoning before the plan is complete feels premature and backwards, the township residents' resources and money went to this plan, that is now having no contribution to major zoning decisions. As someone who believes in zoning and the thoughtful growth it supports, I'm really frustrated with how this process has unfolded. I understand that some nearby communities don't have zoning and seem fine right now, but with Traverse City, Potoski and Gaylor continuing to grow and become less affordable and land become scarce, that development pressure will spread outward. And towns without zoning, like we've become, will be the first to feel it. Once that rural northern Michigan charm is gone, it's gone for good, so I'm asking you to please keep zoning in place, as it protects the character and quality of life that makes Banks Township my home. Thank you.
Agreed. Other public comment?
Uh, my name is Don, we live in Banks Township here, and, uh, I just became aware of this whole issue, and so I'm new at attending these meetings. I came last night and listened to the board discuss the zoning topics, and like Hannah just said, most people are silent unless they have a complaint. So I'm here to tell you that we moved here, we moved into an area where there's an H O A, because we like that. We moved into Banks Township, 'cause it's zoned, because we like that, and we'd like to see zoning stay in place.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, one behind me, the left.
Okay, hi there, Patty.
I'd love to.
Hi Patty. But, uh, I don't wanna read it, I wrote the letter, but I'm gonna give you. Okay. Um, actually, why don't you give it to Cindy, and it'll be part of our public record and go in our minutes?
Okay, I wrote one for each of you.
Thank you.
Well, we're not like, I'm a second, I should have narrowed my.
Oh.
Did I give you a next one?
Yeah, my name is Greg Kirby, and, uh, I do believe in, in keeping the zoning involved, and I think it should be all of us as, um, members of this community to be able to, um, be able to vote whether we keep that zoning or not. I know we vote you guys in to help with these processes, but I believe all of us should be a part of this in terms of how the zoning ordinance should be handled.
Thank you. Patty, this is, I, I. Oh, can you please state your name?
Yeah, Greg Kirby. Resident. Resident of Banks.
Hi, Aaron Harris. Um, I'm still back to whatever yesterday on whether, if you can give us some insight, if zoning was actually enacted or voted in in the seventies? 'Cause that's bringing us here today, 'cause a lot of people are wondering if it's legal or not at this point. And I don't, I don't know the history, so if somebody, somebody fill that in?
Okay, I will take this opportunity to let you know, on the banks township.net website, there's a, a document, you, a clickable document from Michael Beala, another one of our attorneys, who outlines that. And yes, zoning was enacted in nineteen seventy-eight, I think, for this township, and it has been, and it is considered legal, and we've been utilizing that some, ever since.
So though, at that point, why are we asking to be on the ballot? If it's legal, why are we all here asking for that?
The township board voted to repeal zoning, so we're in the process of, um, looking at repealing zoning.
And did they base that decision because of things they heard and seen, rumors?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I can't answer that, I can't, I don't know their minds. Thanks, Aaron. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Betsy Broling, and I live in Banks Township, and I just wanna express my concern about getting rid of the zoning. I think zoning is here to protect and preserve a community, and for most of us, our home and our property is our largest asset, and I think it's critical that we protect what we have. And part of this community is the charm of the agriculture and a nice community, and I think we need zoning to help preserve that.
Thank you.
Again, it's Aaron Harris. It's difficult to preserve something you can't afford to find, so we have to come up with other ways to use that property. Unless you can do it for me and provide the seed and all the things, it's not always affordable.
Thank you, Aaron. I'm gonna cut you off, we'll have one, there is a public comment period at the end. Anybody else?
Yeah, Vicky Kemp, I'm a Banks, um, resident, excuse me. Um, I'm still fairly new to the community and still fairly new to coming to, I don't believe I've ever come to the planning commission, I've come to a couple of the board meetings. So my understanding is, a little bit of research I've done, that as you mentioned, zoning has been in effect back in the seventies. And my understanding is, it was the community that asked for that to happen. And so the, it was the community that brought forth the, uh, the request for zoning, not the board. And so my concern was that the board made the decision a month or so ago, it wasn't on the agenda, and they, and they pushed it through, they made this, uh, proposal and put it through, the community didn't know anything about it. So, my concern is, as some others have mentioned, that this should be, and I, and I'm not for sure of the process, I learned about the process just briefly yesterday, that, you know, it now comes to you, you're gonna make some decisions, I'm not sure what your process is, as to appeal it, to amend it, to, and then it goes to the county. But, and then eventually, the public may have a hearing and may have a voice, but I would hope, as it sounded though many others would, um, that the community needs to be able to vote on this topic. I think from my understanding is, um, what little bit of, that I, my background in researching it and being at other meetings, this is a gentleman that became a member of the board specifically for an agenda, he's pushing through the agenda, um, he's gonna get financial benefit from this agenda, and he couldn't get that passed, so now he's saying, okay, instead of just refining the, uh, land, um, I can't remember what, like sand pits or whatever, uh, now, okay, we're gonna do a wave of all of it. I'm a social worker by trade, I'm a big picture person, I don't think they look at the big picture. Um, there's health issues, there are environmental issues, and so I would like for the planning commission to look at the big picture and do best what's for the community.
Thank you, Vicky.
Hi, Rich Christie, uh, Banks Township resident. Um, I guess I was at the meeting last night as well, and some thoughts that kinda keep coming to mind about the whole zoning thing. You know, of course, it's never about just one person's thing. The, something like zoning in a, in a community like this is gonna affect everyone, whether they wanted it or didn't, et cetera. But as Americans, at least for myself, I think the important question is always freedom. Our entire country, the whole point of this country was individual liberty and responsibility, and the pair of those things is critical to a stable civilization. I believe the best hands are always our own. Now, yes, we need some common laws and things that are gonna keep bad guys off the streets, so to speak, but I trust the people to do the right thing, and occasionally, you're gonna have someone who doesn't. But to restrict the economic liberties and opportunities of an entire area for potential safeguards, it's not something I agree with at all. I think, I think zoning should be repealed, and if, if the majority of the residents in this township disagree with it, it will be no problem to get that on the ballot and overturn that in a matter of months. Um, I think it'd be great if it ended up at a vote of the people, frankly, anyway. Um, but I would, I would encourage this process to, to continue, so that we can find out a majority of this township really how they feel about it through the democratic process of voting. So, as a young person trying to make a living here, I cannot imagine trying to come to Banks Township and do what I do now, if I hadn't been born into a, a family that, I'm third generation, I'm raising the fourth generation, no way would I have tried to start a business and do what we're doing here, if I wasn't building off what my dad did, what my grandpa did, way too many restrictions. And, and I didn't really come to. And I didn't really come to talk about our particular issue of zoning. I am in the middle of a couple of pretty frustrating situations that weren't hurting anybody. And I'm being told I can't do them now because of zoning stuff. It was just helping pay a mortgage. So please, please proceed with repealing zoning and your good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a, just a civil comment. I just want to say that, again, there's a process to this. And it feels like a lot of people think this is getting rammed through. But if you listen, and as this process comes through, if it gets that far, then there is ample opportunity for petitions to be signed to get it on the ballot. And I know there's already been a petition going around. So my guess is whoever signed that is gonna sign the next one. And that's gonna put it on the ballot and that's gonna give you the opportunity, everybody the opportunity, is to vote, vote their heart. So that's all my, my comment is.
So my name is Patricia Hill. And I am a resident in Banks Township. And also relatively new business owner in Banks Township. And I'm zoning commercial and I'm happy to be so. I entered into business in Banks Township with zoning in place. And I'm happy to abide by the zoning under which my motel is restricted. I don't think this is an issue of our property rights or freedom. I think that what we are doing is undermining the public will by usurping or relegating our authority to govern ourselves through local government, which this is, our township. And give that power to the county or even the state to organize and decide for us what is best for our future and what we want our community to look like. And so, yes, you will be allowing yourself to build whatever debt you want or have an Airbnb or put in a gas station or a gravel extraction pit across, you know, next to your neighbor. But also cellphone companies, telecommunications companies, AI data centers, those people will not be restricted from being in that kind of manufacturing right next door to you. Farming, like concentrated agricultural kind of things, not orchard farming, but different types of industrial farming that you may or may not want in your residential community. We also have a recreational corridor along Old Dixie Highway on the lake front edge and also along the upper chain of lakes. And those will no longer be restricted. So people can put whatever they want next to that beautiful waterfront property. And also, I think threatens the quality of life that we currently enjoy in Banks Township.
Unfortunately, they've already destroyed. Patricia, her name is Patricia Hill. Patricia Hill. Oh, then who was the other Patty? Her name is Patty, Patty, what's your last name? That gave us the letter.
Me?
Yes, Wilsey. Patty Wilsey. Okay. And then I also want to say that the people who didn't sign this sign-in paper need to do that before they leave and especially if you spoke. Last chance for public comment before we move on.
Dalton Cosco, Banks Township resident. I believe that zoning, I'm right, is a good thing, but I don't believe that's how it's been done. I would also like to remind everybody here that without zoning, we would still be under the restrictions of laws that the majority of northern Michigan is under. I second what Mr. Frisky said.
Thank you Dalton.
My name is Jesse Anderson, Banks Township resident. What I would personally like to see is that the public be able to make a vote and determine whether our community truly does want zoning or not zoning. It is our understanding and even on that sheet that was at the town hall last night that the board appointed zoning. Township never actually voted according to that paperwork. In nineteen seventy, they actually did. It wasn't Banks Township, it was Antrim County. So in Antrim County in nineteen seventy, two hundred and fifty people in Banks said no to zoning. And ninety-seven of them said yes. So it's not rocket scientists to see that the vast majority of people did not want it. So the question that I have is if there's no smoke and mirrors, I can understand that. The zoning we have is currently legal, I get that. But they have two hundred and fifty people in our township that said no in nineteen seventy. How come not a single one of them said boo in nineteen seventy-three? To me, that sounds odd, like more of a, not to say smoke and mirrors, but it seems like it was pushed. So to say that it was never voted on isn't actually true. It was, two hundred and fifty in nineteen seventy. It was my vote. I personally like to see it on the ballot to see what people actually want. Thank you.
Thank you Jesse. Last call. All right, we are gonna move on to our standing reports. First up, Dave Rasmussen, you're up to bat.
We did not meet on the twenty-ninth. In light of current events, we had a special meeting just to review our bylaws. And it was decided that our current bylaws are effective enough that gets through until we decide what happens with zoning. There's no sense in rewriting them. So we have another ZBA meeting on the seventh next month. I think it's seventh, was it the fourth?
It says seventh, November seventh.
And to review the McAnavits' appeal.
Okay. And Tom Strange was appointed last night to the zoning board of appeals.
I've just gone with that.
Yeah, so we'll include that in your report. Yeah, did you, I know it was your birthday. You were there for a good chunk of the night though. It was at the end of the meeting, Tom Strange. All right, Curtis, zoning administrator.
Well, start out with that. One of the issues that we've been dealing with is going to the zoning board of appeals on November seventh. And they will address it, make a decision on a resolution. So that's all I'll say about that. Secondly, we got the submission of a special use permit request for a storage building operation on US thirty-one in Atwood that you've got, that will be being acted on. Beyond that, the permits have picked up a little bit. I was gonna give you a column, but we're not where we were last year. But it has gotten busier, believe it or not, this time of year. And still a lot of calls, questions about zoning, what can I do, what can I do? Other than that, that's pretty standard stuff, so that's about all I got to say. Any questions?
Questions for Curtis? Okay, thank you Curtis. Richard?
Okay, I can report on two board meetings. The September twenty-second one. And a lot of it ties in together anyway. So if it's something specific to one or the other, I'll make that clear. Otherwise, I'm just combining them both into this one report. A lot of the same topics, just making progress on them. Summer solutions is removing trees and stumps, et cetera, at the Banks Township park and some at the Ellsworth Cemetery. Soil sampling at the Ellsworth Fire Hall, we are getting a quote on that. CSX railway purchase, still trying to gather information and make progress on that, but it's going slow. The township website is being worked on. Good progress is being made. Six mile lake road extension to the Wooden Shoe Park that's complete. And the township shared the cost with the village, the park that's in the village, fifty-fifty. The township paid half of it. As has been already alluded to and obvious from what we're talking about here, we passed this at the September meeting. On a three to two motion, we passed to repeal zoning. It's a necessary first step to bring zoning to a township-wide vote. Now it's here at the planning commission. We're working on updating cemetery plot prices and purchase limits. Regarding streaming and uploading of meetings, that's ongoing discussion. Talking at each meeting a little bit about twenty-twenty-six road projects. We had a lot of hope that Essex Road might be funded in the state budget. That fell through, but the Antrim County Road Commission got an extra three million dollars from the state. And we're asking the road commission board members to use it on Essex Road next year. So, too early to say, but we're pretty hopeful that that might happen. We're seeking requests for proposals on our township insurance. And we're also hopeful for an eleven thousand dollar grant from Rotary Charities of Traverse City for developing a rec plan for the township. And then lastly, Tom Strange was appointed to the zoning board of appeals last night. That's it.
Thank you. Questions for Richard?
Just wanted to, like what you said about the three million that's coming to the county that was begged for, for Essex Road specifically, I believe, by a lot of people, that everyone in this room, contact your commissioners at the level and tell them we want that road fixed some week. Yeah. Without your voice down there, it will get spent on other roads. And I know Mark has worked real hard with their state reps to try to get that money spent on that road. So I encourage you to let the road commissioners know that we want it spent up here.
Thank you David, that's a really good point. One, at one board meeting, I heard Jeri say they do record how many people call and where they call from. So your calls do matter, they do count, so thank you.
Patty, can you back up? I just wanted, can I add to my report? Yeah, I just want to say that because it's in the minutes, I'm sure, of the past, I just wanted to note that I have sent letters out to, three different letters out in regard to compliance on some issues. So they have been sent, people have been contacted. I just don't want people saying later, you're not doing anything about something. So I just wanted in the minutes that those have been sent.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and Ruben?
Ruben Schell here with Beckett and Raider, township planning consultant. So just to give a few brief overview of a few planning and zoning items on the agenda tonight. All of these we're going to cover in greater detail later on in the agenda. But first would be the master plan draft. So the planning commission has been working on the draft master plan for about a year and a half. It was last updated in twenty nineteen. And under state statute, update to that plan is required every five years. So the draft plan is now in full compiled form and available for you all to consider moving forward through the adoption process. This is the adopted policy document that forms the basis under the state statute for land use and zoning development decisions. And plays into different matters, including the zoning repeal as well. So to be covered later in the agenda. There's also two specific zoning items on the agenda here tonight. First, a draft amendment to allow two-family uses or duplexes in a few new residential districts. So that was discussed at the last meeting. The commission decided to move forward with that. And now we have this in draft form for you all to consider. There'll be continued discussion on setback considerations and as well as updates to the sand and gravel extraction ordinance as well that we provided some materials for and will cover later on this evening. So with that, I think that's a quick overview of the Fannie Adams.
Questions for Ruben at this time? All right, moving on to unfinished business, review of the completed master plan. I am gonna pull mine up here, but Ruben, I just want to say I'm really pleased with how it turned out. I think it looks fantastic. Every time I read it, I read for different content and I do have a few tweaks, but they're real easy to change, I think. So with that, on page thirteen fifteen, you don't have to go there, you can just, just hear what, I have to say, I think it'll make sense without flipping there. If you could label all the tables, you, the talk speaks interchangeably between county and township. And I can read on page, I can look at the graph on page thirteen and see the medium home value, what that is. But then I have to go to page sixteen to correlate the two. So labeling would just make it ever so much more clear. Label tables. Small tweak on page fifty-five, again, you don't have to turn there. Under concerns and suggestions, it's Antrim Creek natural area, not nature area, even though it is a nature area. Local residents know it as natural, so just add a L there. On page fifty-nine, if you would like to turn there, if you would like to follow along, I have it in my notes. On page fifty-nine, under natural resource goals, protect water quality, third box down, I would strike explore the, explore the establishment, excuse me, explore the establishment of a point-of-sale septic inspection ordinance. I would strike that because it's redundant, it's in the last box there. And I would change the priority to high on that. So it's just, it mentions at one time. Under infrastructure goals on page sixty, it talks about bike lanes. And I actually would change that priority from low to medium. My daughter's father-in-law's in talks with entities that want to get a trail from, a bike path from Traverse City to the Charlevoix Wheelway. And it's already in their area, which is Torch Lake Drive, East Torch Lake Drive. So I would, and I also know that there's two bike tours that come through our township. It's a long established bike tour, it's one in mid-July, the Ride Around Torch, and then the Del Mac comes on Labor Day. So those big groups of people are biking through our township. So I would actually add that part, I would change that priority from low to at least medium about bike lanes. Also on page sixty, it talks about telecommunications services partnering or working, looking for opportunities to work with providers for internet and cell service. That's rated as a high priority. But on page fifty-three, on the graph, it says that eighty-nine point one percent of residents are, that say their service is very good with few mentioning connection issues. So I don't think that's a super high priority. Does that make sense? All right, and the last one is just for fun. I equally appreciate looking through public, you know, we ask open-ended questions. And in the twenty nineteen master plan, if you look in the back page, it gives a really good snapshot of the sentiment of the community. And I would include those. They weren't in this, but I don't know if you're planning to add them. Some are really insightful, some are ridiculous. Like what does Banks Township need a pro football team? And there's a couple other just silly ones. But I would still add that because people that took the time to participate and had their voice heard, I want that recognized. So I would add in those public comments, those open-ended questions, their responses to that.
Okay, so everything from the survey that was opened and then maybe the survey summary at the Epi and to the city, the public comment.
Yeah, it's in our twenty nineteen. And I do, I think it's, I think it provides some, like I said, a snapshot of the sentiment of the community. So I'd like to see that. It is entertaining, yeah, some people.
Really semi-prosberg, which is really good.
Yes, that's aiming too high. Commissioners, anything for Ruben on the master plan?
I kind of add to your point about the bike trails. Going through the surveys and percentage of what people wanted to look at, that was something I see is lacking in the master plan is recreational, whether it's bike paths, mountain biking. There was big support for even just recreation of all aspects. One was sixty-four percent, the other one was seventy percent support. It was ATVs, UTVs, that type of trails, different, just different recreational activities along with. It was ATVs, UTVs, that type of trails, different, just different recreational activities along with biking, you know. It doesn't seem like that's put as a big accomplice as as a draw, you know, for people to meet and do stuff like that and, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point, Travis. We end with the board working out on acquiring this CSX portion of the railway for bike pa- or for um, you know, pedestrian path that would fit in with that. So, yeah. Any other comments on the master plan?
There were some sections of in the in the future um planning that specifically mentioned uh uh lakefront residential. Would that be a new um district that we would create?
There there is one. There's um waterfront residential, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there's two, there's one just outside of town here. There's one on the east side of Wilson and Ellsworth. And then particularly um Old Dixie Highway. There's some spots that are conservation recreational, but then the majority of the waterfront through there is waterfront residential.
Just hey, it didn't seem like this broke out in there.
Correct me if I'm wrong there, but I looked at the map earlier today before we got here and if you pull it up, um scrolling down, we have a waterfront residential um in one, two, three, four, five. It's on page um sixty-five.
And the reason I bring that up is as we're gonna speak on the the uh the uh two uh family dwellings and allowed in that are one and and add if that would um still be excluded in that lake, in that waterfront. Um, which is, I think, what everyone wants, you know, duplexes on the waterfront. I guess that's my question.
Okay.
Can I just, as the zoning administrator, can I ask for clarification on that? I don't know anything about that.
As a district?
We have a conservation recreation district.
Correct.
Are you talking about making a new one? You're saying that one already exists?
One already exists.
They're saying there's a lakefront residential.
There's not in our, not in our, not in here. Cause we have like nine districts and that's not one. You got a egg, we got conservation recreation.
Future land use, the map on page sixty-five does call out for a waterfront residential.
Is this on the master plan? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you wanna comment on that?
I can comment. Yeah, there there is a waterfront residential district in the future land use of the master plan. So, this is kind of a policy document that guides land use. Um, that waterfront district uh looks to be the, it was in the past master plan, the twenty nineteen one. I believe it was in the one before that. Um, and it corresponds with some areas where the lots are, residential lots are a little smaller and there's a little density um near uh Lake Michigan shoreline and just along a couple other uh residential um districts in the township. Um, but yeah, I think it's critical saying there there isn't an a zoning district that uh corresponds with it. Um, um, it's all under the conservation residential uh district now. Yeah, yeah. So, um, given that those areas are already developed, um, the master plan just sort of illustrates that those should remain in sort of a um, a little bit of a different, the waterfront residential district should remain uh a little different in character than uh say inland residential uh districts. Um, now, does there need to be a separate zoning district to kind of put that into effect? That's something that the planning commission could think about moving forward, but it isn't required to 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 think about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there, yeah, we vary standards, you know, having good practice standards with building and so forth. That makes sense to me. Uh, okay, anything else for Ruben on this master plan? Uh, because now we've made some changes, will you help us understand timeline, how that changes timeline?
Yep, I've included a timeline memo uh in the packet. So, um, there's a sixty-three day review period where the plan has to go out for public distribution. Uh, first it has to go to the board trustees to uh have that authorized once the planning commission recommends to move this document forward uh through uh the adoption process. Uh, the board of trustees then authorizes the sixty-three day review period. So, it'll be available um for public review and sent out to a number of different agencies, including the county, the road commission, um, that kind of thing for comment for about two months, and then it'll come back to you all. So, uh, those are the next steps there. Um, I think um based on tonight's feedback, I might like to take the plan back and uh make a few uh tweaks to it over the course of the next month. And then uh if you all feel it's appropriate, um, move forward with that, that process from there.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Okay, at this time, um, part of the reason we have Nicole here is uh to review our sand and gravel ordinance. We did hire back from Catherine. Catherine Kaufman is one of our attorneys. Um, we take one. And um she did review the sand and gravel ordinance and now we are gonna exercise our attorney-client privilege. And I am about to read a motion that's um super technical. And that's important because um when you, when we are moved, uh, because Freedom of Information Act and Open Meetings Act are a big deal. And so, when you um go into a closed session, you need to make sure that it's technically correct. So, at this time, I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to section eight one H of the Opens Meeting Act, being Michigan Common Law fifteen point two six eight one H, to consider the written email from our attorney dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, which is exempt from disclosure by section thirteen one G of the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, being Michigan Common Law fifteen point two four three one G, since this email is subject to attorney-client privilege. And I would need a second for that.
Patty, I will just make one comment on your motion. It's Michigan compiled law.
Oh, excuse me.
Not common law, but it's why we just say, you can just say MCL as well. That's that's fine.
Thank you, Nicole. Yep. Uh, so that was my motion. Is there a second part? Travis seconded. Okay, at this time, we're going to uh convene in the clerk's office.
You need to have a roll call vote and it needs to pass by two-thirds majority.
Thank you. Keep me in line here. Um, yeah, so roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And Patty, yes. Okay. All right.
It was like there was one black cloud dropping ice.
Yes.
It was kind of.
It was like a snowball.
Yeah.
I know, right? Well, we are getting closer.
Oh, we're getting closer. So close, aren't we? Well, number three to come now.
It is. I know.
I got, I got the pirate.
You did?
I love pirates. I really, I mean, I mean, I like to think about pirates for real. I considered a female pirate, too. Then I thought about women. It would have been a horrible thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, no, I thought too. I like the really shirts.
Yeah.
And I got a lot of.
And I got my cats.
I don't, I don't, I'm not.
No.
So, why?
Yeah.
I know, well, we got. That's why I told everybody we'd ever. That one came to the last hour and a half of their question, uh, from Port to Del Mac. Yes.
Yeah.
So, the old kids can still vote. So, you guys. I don't think. I I I think it'd be really cool if you wanted to.
You gotta spin this off and do something with like the nutty professor or something. So, I.
Well, you've got white light.
Right?
You got some cherry juice. Oh, no, 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 no. Let's not do that. Yeah, yeah, that's exciting. I mean, I'm so totally neutral. I don't, I don't have any established opinion. Something could be meant to. There's some other things going on that I have some questions.
You guys all signed?
No, I didn't. I came late. It was, it was going the other direction.
The one I signed that was at Banks, it must be.
Did you?
I don't think we. Yeah. No. Twenty-two, what I'm trying to be. In twenty-two, I had. You did. My mother died. Yeah, it was just, uh, you know. So, what'd you do? Saw the metal look like that. Yes, yes. You did come out a different person. You don't know. Too early. Okay, you're right. You know, it's like, oh, this actually happened within my character. It's frustrating. The moment's frustrating. All your jokes.
Maybe I'll go all of once. Then I'm worried my phone, my phone is gonna die, you know.
For years, I wrote for a living in every single time. Full job.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Twice a damn time. You did. Were they ever swinging back? One time I had come down the, the deep end of the sea with my. And then. But we'll never know, right? That's your opinion. We did this phone call. They had a witness. So, I got frightened. I'll be today. Shut my phone down and opened it up on Friday. Everything. Wanted to just curl into the. I just.
So, they couldn't get a back though?
Oh, no, I sent it to um, oh, my son.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He wanted computer built, so. Yeah. It's unbelievable. Um, and I sent it to him and then I sent it to somebody else. No, that was the second. I just like. I would send it. Nope, I just turned it up. The blue screen adapter hitch called up. That's what I, that's what I had now. That's what it was. Sure stream had come out to. And uh. Oh, no, that was not. That was. But it just seemed too coincidental. Brian never had that fresh stream before. Why would that happen? Just out of nowhere. No, um, there were tears in Nashville. I mean.
Yes, and you did.
Which is probably one.
Too much.
Oh, God.
Really?
I don't know. I don't understand. You just need to work for this, right?
Yes.
Just work. So, now when you.
I don't care how.
That's what I feel like the door. I don't know. Make it work, Jack. For sharing a computer and, you know, but but yeah, I I have a little bag right here that has some prices on it labeled for each thing that I am involved in and, you know, and I try everything. Quite frequently, I haul it out. Do we really do expensive things? You know how to use it. You know how to get stuff. You know, cause I backed it up and I just looked at it. When they talk about the cloud, if I just send email, it says they're blocking it in my cloud. Well, I never personally put anything in the cloud anyway. Right, yeah. I said, no, I'm like, just don't watch behind my sunrise. I never used to have access to cloud, so I never.
You go.
Did you know, my, my told me that. No. Okay, I have not really. I told you that it was way too full. And so, I went through and I looked and I moved all of my pictures and put them in files on my desktop. Okay. Moved over there.
Okay.
And then I would delete that.
It was on upload. Screen capture shots.
Yeah.
Stuff that I didn't.
Yeah, yeah. I went through each one of them. And I'd have a downtime, you know, so like thirty minutes before I could. And every, I'd have a downtime, you know, so like thirty minutes before I could work that day, I'd just go be. Forty new or take out anything that I want. It was, it was, it took me, I did it for about two weeks and it got me back to twenty twenty one. And then I, then I thought, it's good. It's got.
So this is your Gmail emails you're talking about?
It was, yeah. You sold me.
All you're doing, all the, all the emails that we've sent.
Yep. All.
So you're. What's that?
And then, and then you, and then you need some. And then somebody says, hey, what about the? And you go. I treated that so casually. Yeah. Exactly. And then I got kind of mixed up. Well, that's because I'm my, you know, job. Like I said. I've got a project, you know, so one's called Baby Pigs. That's an important file.
Yes.
How does the file, I mean. And then, you know, then, like when my mother died in all these states, I saw one file and then I wanted.
That's all your file.
I have different files. Yeah, yeah. Those emails that you looked over, they're the important pieces. But I don't want to get those files.
I don't want to hear that.
I'm not happy with that at all. They always need to be successful. One of these days, I'm gonna just wash everything down, like toilet and water. So I'm taking some. Call me and I'll come up. You know, by then. I could, I should try that local. Local. I don't call it. I'm probably not ever. Today says. A hundred for ten pound.
You talked about East Georgia.
Okay, in the summertime, Royal Farms had burger and a plate. Fridays. I got them. You know what? I got their family. One day and they said, this is our last day. Just finally, I had to figure it out in my. But next year I will. Okay. Royal Farms, you walk up the hill and they had a nice, always beautiful, and you want to. Okay. Antrim Downs. I heard they had a really good fish.
Really?
Oh, really? Okay, wait, we should go there, but are they closed for the season? Are they? You for the information? Somebody passed you for goodness sakes. Okay, I was meaning to get to Antrim Downs, cause somebody told me they had a great fish dinner, fish fry on Fridays. But I chose to go to Royal Farms instead and then they were closed for the season. Everybody's closed for me. No, I like. Like no one's doing the rounds like Tuesday, Friday, Friday, farms, you know.
Go Saturday, go Providence to get some food.
Go, go stay at the beach too, since it's seasonal, we can only do it in the summertime. There is a torchlight.
So you had the.
I go by it all the time and I just, there was.
We did have.
There are little.
Providence. Any other. Exactly.
Oh, yeah, they got. I might. The clerk's, okay, election's coming up. The clerk's office is probably pulled on the election stuff. I bet.
Okay, um, so at this time, I would make a motion that we return to our regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All right, in support? Travis, for support. All in favor?
Hi.
Propose? Okay, um. So in our closed session, we did discuss our standing gravel ordinance. As I stated, it was reviewed by Catherine Kaufman, who's one of the main attorneys in Michigan who litigates for townships. And as a result of that, we have a motion to make.
Uh, I would like to make the motion that we have the township attorney revise the current police power ordinance to make it more clear between zoning and then, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, to make it so it's not in conflict with the gravel ordinance and make it more of its own documentation. And am I saying that correctly?
Yeah. You want us to revise the police power ordinance to reflect more that it is a licensing, permitting ordinance for standing gravel projects and not a land use type of ordinance? And make sure it still works with any zoning ordinance that may or may not still be in effect come that decision time.
Cindy, are you clear on that?
But I do have it in order.
Okay.
I will support their motion.
David supports. Roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
And I would agree that as well. All right, motion carried. All right, next up to bat here, setbacks consideration. I sent more information to you on setbacks. Yes.
Shouldn't maybe clarify before we leave that agenda item that what our intent is with the gravel ordinance at this time? Because we didn't talk about that, we just talked about police power.
Based on our, our meeting that we just had. Um, to kind of summarize with everyone, we are not going to be doing anything with the gravel ordinance at this time until there's more clarity on what the township is going to be doing in terms of repealing zoning in the future.
And the theory is not to spend money, even though I have to spend on something that might be gone in a couple months, so.
Thank you, Richard. I sent tables, I don't know if you bought them, they came through.
I did not.
Here's what's going on in other, um, communities in Antrim County that are zoned. Weirdly enough, the Lee Township in Bel Air had the same exact schedule of regulation. I, I think they either went together and got the two for one attorney or went to the same campus or something. But that's what's going on in other townships. In Antrim County, many of you know, there's eight townships that aren't zoned. Their setbacks are governed by state law, or excuse me, yeah, state law. So the building code, um, health department and environmental. So building code, they have to be twenty to twenty-five feet from the road and then thirty-three feet from center line. And for those that aren't zoned, technically, it's building code that regulates. So builders fact check me. As I recently learned about building code, my brand new neighbor could put a fire rated house five foot from my property line. Or if it's a shattered garage that's four hundred square feet or less, it could be three foot from my property line. So that, they, that's what they got going on. And then environmental would be so many feet from the septic and, excuse me, um, health, the health code would be so many feet from the septic and environmental is fifty feet from the high water mark line. So that would be their guiding, um, decisions regarding their setbacks. And here's what we have going on. We got a memo from our planner, Ruben, talking about setbacks and, Ruben, do you wanna, do you have, would you like to say, would you like to reiterate some of the things that you shared about setbacks?
Sure thing. Was this back in September meeting, Patty?
Yep. So September nine.
Yeah, I think my overall, um, kind of some of the points with, um, setback reduction is, um, first to, to review, there was a, a motion back in the, um, I can't remember, I think it was the August meeting to eliminate front setbacks entirely from the zoning ordinance. And so we had.
It was to, excuse me, it was to eliminate them where road right of ways exist.
Okay.
So we can just go with the road right of ways instead of any additional setbacks.
Okay. Thank you, yes. So front setbacks where road right of way exists, so, um, road right of way would be sort of the defining, uh, kind of building envelope on any given lot. So, um, yeah, I had drafted a memo, um, outlining just a few, um, potential items to, to think about when it comes to setbacks. The first one was snow storage and road maintenance and how the township's existing front setbacks really help to ensure that there's space for those kinds of functions. Another item is safety and roadway functions. I think kind of one of the reasons front setbacks of at least fifteen, twenty and twenty-five feet are very common in kind of rural residential communities of banks townships where there's, um, rural residential roads, um, kind of bisecting, um, the township. So ensuring that buildings have setbacks and that they're safe, um, on those, uh, from those front property lines is one of the concerns there. Community character, um, again, this ties back to the master plan. The township's twenty nineteen master plan has a very strong like preservation sort of aesthetic to it. And I think, um, as has been mentioned in this meeting and acknowledged, I think, Banks Township has had zoning and setbacks since, um, for over four or five decades now. So consistency, ensuring that, um, setbacks are consistent with what's said in that master plan and what the policy there articulates is something to consider as well. And then I think that hits on really the other couple of points. As, um, in the memo that I wrote here back in September is that, um, state statute requires that zoning decision be, um, based on the master plan that the master plan has adopted has, and the draft one that you all have now, is a very strong like preservation, um, kind of quality to it and message and that, um, our thought there is that the set, front setbacks are in keeping with that in, certainly in residential districts. Now, as far as next steps go, um, I think wrapping up the memo, um, finding, um, ways to potentially tailor setbacks or reduce the existing setbacks in maybe the CR district or A one district, um, would be something to think about. I think in a lot of communities that we work in up here, there are setbacks that kind of make it hard to build on certain lots in, um, the community. That's one of the reasons variances exists is that so, um, property owners applicants can request a variance or an exception from setbacks. But some communities will choose to tailor or reduce setbacks a little bit, um, perhaps not eliminating them entirely though. And then, yeah, some streamlined relief options, uh, enabling the zoning administrator staff to, um, grant some relief in certain situations. So those were, um, and of course, when it comes to catering setbacks or identifying options to reduce them, we look to you all as experts on the community to kind of determine where, where we want to look into them, so.
Well, I guess, I guess I thought that was a motion that you made was to remove the front setbacks just to the road right of way setback was the motion that got boarded on.
So setbacks are from your lot line. Your lot line is generally from the road right of way. So that's where your start of your lot line is under your zoning ordinance. And then you have, um, for example, maybe a fifteen foot setback and then you can build a house. Okay? A lot of times, the paved portion of the road is not necessarily in the center of the road right of way. So you have to be cognizant of that, that, that can become an issue. For example, I know in the village of Bel Air, there's one road that the paved portion is right at the edge of the, of the, um, road right of way. Cause when they paved it, you know, there was things around, but, you know, it was also done in the eighteen hundreds, that flat. So you have to be cognizant of that. That's why we have the setbacks in your zoning ordinance. You can reduce those setbacks. Some of your setbacks in your zoning ordinance are, I think, thirty feet. You could reduce it to twenty-five feet, you could reduce it to twenty feet. And I don't think that would change the character of, of the township, but that's up to you guys. I'm not sure what exactly you guys want to do with the setbacks. I would suggest not eliminating them completely, um, but this is also a conversation if you continue to have zoning.
In light of that, I think we should, since I made that motion originally, maybe it's appropriate for me to make this one as well. I think we should put that on hold, just like we just did with the gravel ordinance. We don't need to be spending time on this until we know the outcome of this zoning as a whole.
Okay, are you? Okay.
So I would, I would move that we put this whole setbacks question on pause pending the final resolution of the zoning repeal.
Further discussion?
Hey, is there?
We need a second.
Second to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a motion. Were there, does someone second that motion? Any support for that?
I guess I have a question. What is, uh, and I, I apologize for not knowing this. What are the current setbacks if they're, if the zoning was to go away? What are the current setbacks that we have to abide by for the county level?
It's twenty to twenty-five feet from road right of way. So it's thirty, thirty-three feet from center line and then you have either fifteen to thirty-five feet or whatever.
That's your, that's for your guys' zoning.
Yeah.
County doesn't have zoning.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be the building code, the fire code, the health code.
Got it.
All of that stuff that you'd have to abide by.
Okay.
I think it would only be the right of ways that you can go. The county road commission has right of ways and you can't build within the right of ways.
Understood, thank you.
So there wouldn't be any other setbacks?
But we were only talking about.
A little bit on most of the road. Additional on the thirty-one corridor. But that's M dot.
M dot right of ways are generally larger than, than county right of ways, yes.
And they vary. I talked to Bert. There's a, there's an M dot map that shows the thirty-one corridor and where the, what the right of ways are along, so.
Okay, so do we need a motion here just to put it on pause or can we just table this?
There is a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of putting this on pause until zoning is sorted itself out? Or? All, all, all in favor of putting this on pause until the issue of zoning has been determined? I'll take a roll call about David.
Yes.
Tyler? Travis? No?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carried. Okay, well, let's see where we, how far we get this one. Okay, well, let's see where we, how far we get this one, review, draft, two family, which is only a minute.
Just a motion to table it, we were not gonna do anything on it, we'll skip over it, we're done with our panel.
All right, is there support for that, there's a motion on the table, is there support for that?
Yes, I support that, so, rush it out.
Okay, roll call vote, Richard.
Yes.
Yes.
That would be a yes.
Yes, two.
Yes.
All right. Um. Moving right along. All right, we're up to the repeal zoning portion of our meeting, um, we can, we can talk about meeting, but our main objective with this is to, uh. Vote to set a public hearing, um, make a motion to set a public hearing.
Make a motion to set it for our next board meeting.
Uh, okay, can you read this motion, David? Read that.
There was some concern about whether we have enough time.
When, when is your next board meeting?
Yes.
So we can't do it November eleventh, there's not enough time, we have to have at least fifteen days in the paper to have your notice, to have your notice. Um, and then post it and all that stuff, so. And that's a very minimum amount of time, um, fifteen days from November eleventh is the twenty-seventh, and that's this upcoming one day. And the paper doesn't come out until Thursday, so that's not enough time.
Okay.
So what is our?
Right, that's my thought too, can we move the meeting back a week to, otherwise we're gonna be up against Christmas, it's a public hearing, so.
Um, so what, what are you proposing, that we change the meeting to?
So it's.
Go a month from now instead of three weeks, or a month, we're a week late this month.
Okay.
Just move our next regular meeting back a week, which should give us enough time.
November eighteenth?
You could do the eighteenth, because then that would be, um, you'd get it in the paper on the thirtieth of November, that's more than fifteen days.
Here you thought, no, October.
October, okay, okay, um.
That would be the, so the very quickest you could have it, otherwise you can, you can bump it out like more than one.
Okay, well, I think we're, folks are, I mean, we're all eager to move forward, so, um, so on that, can you change it to November eighteen, okay?
I'll change the date, yes. Uh, I did rest, I moved that the Banks Township Planning Commission scheduled a public hearing to be held November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Banks Township Hall. To receive, to convene, street and consider public input regarding the Banks Township Board of Trustees' motion on the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five proposed, proposing to repeal, uh, Banks Township zoning ordinance in its entirety.
Yes, it's important. Travis supports, uh, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Booked, um, will be carried.
Do you need to sign any of this or this is for your?
Um, that's for, no, you don't need to sign that, but you do need to sign the minutes.
My minutes?
No, those minutes, remember, okay, um, uh, is that all we have, guys?
One more.
Okay.
Does that officially and automatically take care of properly moving our next meeting to a later date?
No.
Because there was some question about that.
Okay, so we need a motion to move our meeting, and it would be a special meeting. It's not a regular meeting.
It'd be a regular meeting, just move, because we're gonna have this meeting.
But you have to have a hearing in a regular meeting.
You have, so you have to have a public hearing in a, in an open meeting, doesn't have to be special, it can be regular. You can have, you, right now you're scheduled to have a regular meeting, November eleventh, and a special meeting on November eighteen. You can, you can cancel or you can move your regular meeting from the eleventh to the eighteenth to have it all on one, on one day. That is what I would suggest doing.
I made, I make a motion to move our regularly scheduled meeting from the eleventh to the eighteenth in conjunction with the public hearing.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Richard, all in favor, propose, motion carried. Um, I do have one more thing that we can vote on ourselves here, um, I have a public participation policy. I did send it to you, but I do have one that's properly cited, um, it's gonna be important going forward that we have something in place. Um, this is straight from the Michigan Township Association policy book, there's nothing I invented here. Um, you can't, you can't say we're only gonna take public, you have to have a time limit, you can't say we're gonna only take public comment from eight to eight-thirty. If a hundred people show up, a hundred people can talk, so the only control we have is, and, and it's an equalizer too, to put a three-minute timeframe on them. It's an equalizer, you can't let one person go on for fifteen minutes and another get two minutes. So that was the impetus for that, and the other was just a, uh, training that some of us attended and, um, were advised to hold one public comment period. And that's all that's required of us, and I would like to do that, and so, hey, you have before you a proposed public participation policy. And, um, and we can vote on that and enact it, and it could be our own policy, do I need, let's see, I'll read this. Uh, any person may attend the open sessions of a public meeting, a public body cannot put conditions on attendance such as requiring a person to identify him or herself. A person may be excluded from a specific open meeting, open meeting, only for breach of peace and that's actually committed at that meeting, M C L fifteen dot two six three. Public comment, the public has a right to address the meeting of a public body under rules established and recorded by the public body. The public may have at least one opportunity to speak publicly in an open meeting, and this has become, come to be known as a public comment period. The public may address the planning commission during the single public comment period for no more than three minutes on any matter. Persons shall be recognized in the order in which they entered their name on the provided comment, public comment signup sheet, which is what Cindy has when you come in. Indicating their desire to address the planning commission. Any additional persons desiring to address the planning commission who didn't use the signup sheet shall be recognized following those who have signed in. Consideration shall be given to a designated spokesperson who wishes to present a specific point of view for a group of people. Who may have additional time to adequately represent the group's views. When it comes to recording, M C L fifteen dot two six three states the right of a person to attend a public meeting. A, a meeting of a public body includes the right to tape, record, videotape, broadcast live on radio or telecast, live on television, the proceedings of the public body at a public meeting. The exercise of this right shall not be dependent upon approval of the public body. However, the public body may establish reasonable rules and regulations in order to minimize the possibility of disrupting the meeting. Reasonable rules and regulations may include directing that the recording equipment be located to a particular part of the room. To minimize risk of tripping over cords and blocking view of the audience. And that is Michigan Township Association, um, policy matters using board administrative policies to manage your township. So, um, is there any discussion on this?
And, and I forgot my copy. I would, um, I would still prefer to have public comment involved in the meeting.
Correct.
Even though it's only required one, I think it's very beneficial, um, people to sit through the meeting, things are fresh in their mind, you don't have to wait to the next meeting to come out or comment on, on the last. And I, I've been to enough meetings to realize how important it is. So I would, uh, motionably approve everything on that, other than adding a second section for public comment.
Um, good question, has, has anybody at the firm reviewed that or given that to you?
Um, I just ran it by Alex.
This can happen to you.
Yeah, I understand.
I just, I just, um, sent it to Alex and he said that's your policy, you can vote on it if you want to. Is there a question about this?
You have, you also have bylaws that you guys follow, okay? Um, but I don't want this new policy to. Be in, inconsistent with what your bylaws are, because your bylaws you need by statute, you don't necessarily need policies, okay? If you wanna add about public comment, um, limiting it to three minutes, um, that's a normal person, a normal addition to the public, to your bylaws, and you can amend it that way. Um, I would not suggest adopting a policy like this, but maybe working it into your bylaws somehow, so we have that document, because that's your policy document, how you run your meetings and how the planning commission goes forward.
Okay.
So that's how I resent my.
You guys both want both, uh, front and back on public comment. I make a motion that we limit public comment to three minutes per person at the beginning and ending of each meeting.
Okay, um, but we can't do that, right?
Yeah.
You, you can do that, and we can, we can add that to your bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, understood, sorry, very good, um.
Create a policy, just changing our bylaws to reflect everything that you want that to.
Okay, um, so can you please restate your motion?
To limit public comment to three minutes per person. At, open at the, open, uh, opening of the meeting, public comment and ending of the public comment.
Okay, second for that?
I'll second that.
All right, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose, pose me, um, motion carried, all right, um. Very good, so now we're back to public comment time.
Fred Huxman, I live here in Banks Township, I would like public comment to be for people in Banks Township. Not somebody from El Graff that wants to come up and spew and, and complain about stuff, I really don't care what they think. It's about us, the people in our community, not somebody that wants to come in and stir the pot, so, that's my three minutes.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad, sorry to show up late here, I was cooking dinner and I might smell onions, sorry, I'll just everybody around me here, but just kind of heard a little bit about what was happening here. I don't pretend to know what the heck is going on here, because I don't understand local government at all. Um, but what I do know is that a lot of the information is not out there to the public yet, especially on gravel and, and sand mining here. So I think the public needs to know more, I think we have to have more public hearings about this, more public discussions, because yesterday I did bring up the fact that I found about fifty to sixty associated disorders with sand and gravel mining. Um, in the scientific literature, and I think that's important for the public to know, I know that they don't really understand this or know this. And to your point there, I mean, everything that we do here, we're at the tip of the chain of links, that goes down to every other community in Antrim County. So I mean, these issues do affect everybody around us, it's not just us here, and so we do have to think about our neighbors here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, again, I just, I just have a statement, um, I know we're not supposed to look to the past, but as I look to the future with our planning consultant that, you know, we pay, I'm sure, good money for. I don't see much planning for the future, I don't see much, I see restriction, I see a past where we had grocery stores in town, we had gas station, we had a car dealer, we had a barber, we had a hair salon. We had, you know, summertime, about, or baseball, softball tournaments, we had restaurants. Um, out in Atwood, we had a gas station, we had implement store that's now, now we're getting storage units. And on a Sunday afternoon, where are you gonna buy a gallon of milk in Ellsworth if it weren't for the Dollar General? There's nothing here anymore. And for those who love to see the empty fields and the, and the geese flying over, that's really great, but we used to have commerce here, we had a doctor in town. We, I, I, we had kids riding their bicycles on the streets and having a good time. I come through town to get my nail at noon, and it's dead, there's nothing, nothing like it used to be. You know, I, I don't understand what this planning for the future is planning, and planning is nowhere. I, I, I like this community too, I've been here forty years, my husband's a third generation, just like the Chris's. But we've seen such a decline in things for the public. I mean, it's great you wanna have a storage unit, but how does that serve us for people who wanna, you know, who'll buy a twelve pack of beer, there's nowhere to get it. And what if it weren't for the Dollar General, thank God they came in, I guess, and you know what other towns look like, they look poor, they have Dollar Generals and storage units. It's, that's, that's scary, sad. Thank you, Erin. You're welcome. Chris?
Uh, I'm Chris Randall, I, um, am a resident here, also a business owner in the township. Um, I wanna give a little bit different perspective, um, the business thing, to follow up on your comment, exactly what you're saying. Um, zoning, I think, is well intended, and I think when you, um, when you look at the concept of zoning, it makes tons of sense. We all wanna look at the open fields and the geese, um, that's why we live here. Uh, but when we look at it from a business perspective, zoning itself can be very oppressive. Um, and, uh, the, my own personal story, fifteen years ago, when we opened our business in town, um, we had to get a waiver. We were very fortunate that we did, okay? Um, well, we took a building that had no roof, was falling down, hadn't been mowed in years, and was literally falling to pieces. It's a little bit better now, um, it's not the greatest, but it, it works. Um, and now I, uh, I employ six people, um, that come into the township and work. I, um, draw people literally from all over the state of Michigan to Ellsworth, um, because we got that waiver and that system worked really well. But it was an uphill battle, it wasn't automatic, um, and it wasn't just, we're gonna give a waiver to everybody. I had to really prove, um, that we deserved and needed that waiver, but had it have gone the other way, we wouldn't be here, that building would probably still be empty. Um, and so the, my point is, is that our conflicts, um, there with, uh, zoning and planning at the time was that the zoning and planning, uh, uh, ordinance was so out of date. That, um, we, our, our, uh, our conflict was that vet clinics need five acres, um, to go on. Well, that was, that was written back in the fifties or sixties, when vet clinics, all we did was take, took care of, uh, cows. And so the, the zoning, my, um, my point is, is that if zoning still survives, um, that you guys, as the commission, need to make sure that. The ordinances are up to date and, and, um, uh, current and not just, um, depend on waivers. Because if, if we hadn't been dealing with a friendly, um, board at the time, we wouldn't have gotten approved, and we wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be able to open my business. Um, and it wouldn't have been, um, successful, and we wouldn't be doing what we're doing now. Um, but what we do now helps everybody in the township, and so another, uh, example, I think you can look at it, um, so. Look at Banks Township, which we love, look at Central Lake Township that doesn't have zoning, look at the business and the activity and the commerce. Um, and that's it, that's it, um, so I'm not opposed to zoning itself, but, um, remember that it's a really powerful tool. And can be used for good or for, um, oppression, and we have to look at, at the, the effects.
Thank you, Chris.
Trisha. Again, I just wanted to mention that I think zoning has nothing to do whatsoever with the fact that we don't have a gas station any longer in Atwood or a grocery store. All of those things are currently allowed and permissible fully in the commercially zoned sector of the village of Atwood, which we inhabit as Atwood and no doubt. Uh, so that is not the reason why those businesses no longer exist in my community, there are other reasons, including the unaffordable cost of living here.
Taxation.
And taxation, but, so, other, in addition to that, I was looking into what becomes of our master plan if we do repeal zoning. And effectively, it stays in place, but it becomes entirely unenforceable. So we have no legal avenue by which we can enact the public's wishes that the master plan is supposed to reflect and, uh, guide the future of our community with it. The master plan just becomes something that we can look to, uh, for guidance, but it is not enforceable in any way. There is no legal avenue to guide development in our community of the need to have zoning.
Thank you.
And the master plan is basically meaningless and fully moot.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, again, um, Banks Township's been a mining community for a very, very, very long time. And I respect the young man's, um, un. And I respect the young man's intent, and he's very well spoken, I respect him, I don't know him by respect. Looking at our community, if all those fifty diseases, or whatever they are, I think we all would have fourteen eyeballs at this point. The amount of mining that's been in our community for so long. But, the other side of the thing is, he's absolutely right, there could be some things, but if you look at other communities, if we don't have a dead mine here, we're gonna be inheriting other people's problems, because it's gotta come from somewhere. Last time I checked, when you're getting a load of gravel, twenty yard quad coming in, it's not UV screened or filtered or pill dried or any of that, they're scooping it out of here and bringing other people's problems here. Regardless of whether we want it or don't want it, it's gotta come here at some point, whether we truck it from our own community or we truck it from someone else's. So, in that perspective, it's, do we wanna inherit our own problems or someone else's?
No, you get one, one, one and done.
I didn't use all my three minutes, trying to just say something for one second, so?
Anybody else, a public comment?
I would, I would just like to sort of, sort of respond to that, and that, I don't think, I've been sitting through all these meetings. I don't think anybody doesn't want the gravel pit. I, I, it's my impression that, in fact, it's, you know, everybody wants, everybody wants their neighbor to be able to make a buck. That's, that's the way it is. But, at the same time, we want an ordinance in place, we want procedures followed, and we want, we don't want you making your buck to affect our drinking water and our, our basic health and our property values. And so, go ahead and have your, your gravel mine, but please, follow the protocols and the procedures that are put in place so that it is a, it is a good-for-the-whole-community sort of thing, and not just, oh, because I got here first and I had the power to do it, I, I make this thing happen for myself. Please, please, let's put good policies in place that protect everybody, especially our drinking water, and especially the chain of lakes, and let's, and then let's let our neighbor make a buck. I mean, I don't think anybody, I've never heard, in all these meetings, I haven't heard that anybody doesn't want a gravel pit. It's just, how, how do we get from A to B with all of our, you know, all of our, everybody's, everybody's buck coverage, so to speak, so?
I have a couple of comments to make, one is that, sitting here observing this meeting for the first time, and I'm a little chagrined by the idea that you don't wanna talk about the issues that are current, that you have to deal with. I think that's your job, and tabling them until we figure out the zoning ordinance is kinda just kicking the can down the road. I hope that the zoning stands, and then you still have to discuss those matters. On the issue of the gravel pits, let's not just completely roll over to that, because there are some, a lot of negative effects behind, besides health issues. There's the road, road wear and tear, you're gonna have a lot more trucks. A friend of mine just moved away from a gravel pit, because it drove him crazy, all the truck traffic. So there are negative consequences to these things. I appreciate anybody that wants to make a living, as they should. Regulations protect the rest of us from each other.
Yep.
It's a mutual gain, mutual pain. So I believe in zoning, and I'll continue to fight for that, thank you.
Pat McAllister, talk about setbacks, not actual zoning. Back in August, if I remember correctly, you guys made and passed a motion to have Ruben make a draft for eliminating, eliminating setbacks. That was what, two months ago? He still has not done that, instead, you've gotten a memo on why you shouldn't do that. Shouldn't you still be looking for that language for him to draft? I mean, regardless if you're gonna talk about it or not, you should still have a public comment, correct?
This isn't a back and forth, sorry. This isn't a back and forth time, we, we just.
I know, I'm just making my point. I'm done.
Thanks, Pat. Yes?
If you're gonna have zoning, it should be straight across the board, not overlook what's next door and throw away, or whatever you do, or complaints are written. I've had a couple, filed a couple of other times, and filing for you, there's no copies of nowhere. We know there's new people in now, but complaints have made, things are still there, just like the fence on my property, there's never been a citation written. I'll give it up from there. It's not straight across the board. Two you know.
Thank you.
That's exactly what's happened with us. We live on Old Dixie Highway, and historical Goyer Creek has been totally destroyed, in case anybody's interested, with these houses they're putting up on Fox Mission, where the whole zoning ordinance was written up, and there's not been anything followed through with this at all. Nothing has protected our, the wetland back there. It's been totally destroyed. This yehu builds his house up there, because he's gotta get his heavy equipment and crap up there. He totally destroyed the wetlands. And this is a historical Goyer Creek. Everybody knows Goyer, Goyer Creek.
It's federally protected.
Federally protected, and this yehu has just.
Destroyed.
Destroyed.
One man.
This is a.
Money.
Yeah. And what, what has zoning done for us? We, we have.
They changed it so he could do it.
Yeah. I feel that they should put it back to its historical, it needs restored. It, it is totally destroyed.
There's a twelve thousand square foot house on the hill, and another one going up beside it.
We've had nothing, nothing but.
The creek floods all the time, you know? I have water in my crawl space.
We've had nothing but water problems since this all started.
Who do we complain to? Nobody answered us.
We did. We have filed, we.
I've called the EPA. I've filed with the state, nobody does nothing, zoning done nothing.
Zoning won't do anything. Except let it, let, again.
They did raise my taxes, though.
Yeah. Graciously raised our taxes to put up with the ruin, our, you know, we, we have been there forty years. I mean, this was, we, we, this is God's country, we, we, we are living in God's country, and this yehu, just because he can do it, he just totally destroys it, and nobody says a thing about it.
From the top to the bottom, it all rolls downhill.
That subdivision is like twenty years old, up there.
It was beat out once.
Thank, thank you for your comments, um, well, just to keep on moving forward.
Anybody else have a comment?
Rob Essenberg, resident for a long time, my friend, my grandmother lived here, and I just wanted to start by saying thank you. I know each one of you personally, and I forgot my readers tonight, Travis, but I'm glad to see you had a parish, I need them. But, you know, what's that, I just wanna say, what's that balance, right? It's my land, I wanna do what I want to, and then, we the people, right? So don't pay our taxes, see how long, it is really our land, and all of a sudden, the government will have it, and then, who is the government? So go back to we the people, so, I just wanna say thank you to each one of you who's here tonight, because we're not following your word, the guy with the biggest gun, necessarily. There is a process and a procedure that the people's opinions, thoughts collectively can be expressed, shared, you guys serving, the board serving. We don't always come to the eye to eye in how things should be handled, and I feel that Dr. Randall, pre-zoning that, not only did he have to get an ordinance for this, he had to move out of his first vet clinic, right? So there was a spot, but, but, you know, how do we the people not just let an individual do whatever they want to, whenever they want to? It is still a government, that we collectively love this area, and somehow, we collectively, hopefully, can come together. I don't know the answer necessarily, but I appreciate you guys being part of the discussion, and I appreciate the, the public comment from and back. I was just, one time, some steam really started rolling, I maybe, it's like, don't cut the public off on a time when we need to be heard, so, I think my three minutes are close up. Well said.
Thank you, I already had you go, sir, anybody else? Final thoughts?
Can you, Ryan Costa, Bangs Township resident. You know, I know Mr. Bustman doesn't wanna hear about it any longer, and I'm actually glad Mr. Essenberg is here. That house on Church Road never got a ticket, not one ticket. Instead, he got help, Mr. Essenberg got help cleaning it up, great, and I, and I commend you for that, thank you. I think we all appreciate that, it's getting to the end. But again, is it who you know here, 'cause that's in plain view, and I can't imagine there was no complaints about it. But what, because it's going to Mr. Essenberg's ticket, it doesn't get done? I mean, I think it needs to be across the board, nothing against you, I don't even know.
Well, it's not a back and forth, I have been discussing it.
I mean, I'm just saying, that no tickets were done, no tickets were ever written for that house on Church Road, ever.
Thank you.
So what has only done for us in this community really?
It would still look like that if it weren't for zoning.
Anybody else, any final comments?
I guess I, I will, yeah. Amy Anderson, Bangs Township. I was born and raised here, and then moved away first ten years, and then I moved our family back. We have six children, and we live just outside here, and, you know, I convinced my husband to move back here because of it's beautiful, it's recreational, there's water, there's lakes, good Christian families, a nice school, and very elegant little town that I was born and raised, there are lots of memories, wonderful people that live here. And I convinced them, we moved back, and what we've seen unfold in the last ten years was rather the opposite of what I was used to growing up with. You know, I see, you know, ten and six children, there is not a lot to do here, really. Things are moving out, like, like Erin said, you know, growing up, gosh, even trick or treating, the streets were packed. And there was restaurants, really well-known restaurants, and businesses in Atwood. And actually, the trick or, the John Deere Santa, even when we moved back here, that was like the highlight of my kid's season, was the John Deere Santa. But we're seeing now that we have to go to East Jordan and Charlotte Boy to do anything, and we're giving our money to them, to Central Lake. They have a much better beach to go swim at. Here, we have a pool, I, you know? So what's, what's happening, I'm seeing, is that these ordinances are pushing what is gonna carry Ellsworth. It's my family, our families, they're pushing them out, and we're bringing in the quiet, tranquil retirees. But that's, and that's great, except we're gonna swim on disgusting beaches, and we're not gonna have parties in our, our shelter here, and we're not gonna, there's, there's no businesses, we're having storage units for more crap that we don't need. Like, I'm sorry, that was new to me today. What are storage units are we talking about, the ones here? They used to be a grocery store? No, out in Atwood, so, I can, will continue to have to take my kids to East Jordan and Central Lake to go do things, and give our money to them. So I guess I'm just, I'm bumming. So our, our schools are not gonna thrive on this, I suppose. I mean, our schools are dwindling anyway here in Ellsworth, but it's gonna be worse, because no families are gonna come in. And as far as like the hog farms and the solar panels and everything, I mean, it's gonna be really no different than moving next to a farm and having poop sprayed, and you gotta smell that every day. I guess I would rather live next to the pallet factory than to be surrounded, sorry, sorry, surrounded by acreage of manure. I was gonna say, you know, I, I guess I'll take the solar panels, I will, then.
Thank you.
So, with some of the business comments, the, the village has its own zoning that will not be going away. This is Bangs Township we're referring to, so when we're talking about business in downtown, I just, I think they're still gonna be zoning there, and there's still ways to, to do things in the village. I understand there is Atwood, a major parish corridor, with businesses. So I just, I think some of the comments with the business components, I just, like, there's separation between the village, and I know Atwood is one of the parish corridors, I just, they're still gonna be zoning within the village, so, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Let's call. Anybody else before I let the board speak?
I'd like to speak. Dalton Costa. I'd like to reiterate that zoning done right is a good thing. There's a lot to protect here, I believe you all know this. However, it hasn't been done that way, and it isn't a mutual legal like most of us like to believe. And that's why there were over two hundred and fifty signatures to remove zoning, and that's why we are where we are, here, today.
Thank you. Okay, board, you have final say, or commission, not board. Any question?
Am I speaking as party commissioner, or?
Would you like to speak as a private citizen, or?
I would, I would, yes. I'm a private citizen that owns multiple properties in Bangs Township. I own the storage buildings here in Ellsworth. I grew up in this town with two grocery stores, bars, restaurants, gravel pits, hardware, lumberyards, train stations, factories. Zoning didn't drive those out, in my opinion. Ellsworth's still gonna be zoned, if zoning goes away. Over-mortgaged, mismanaged, we've all been to the store that's open on Sunday, and then they're not. We've all been to the store that was open in five, that's why we're, and now they're not, that's why we're buying our products in other towns, we're used to it. We don't have a car lot, because a bummer passed away after all these years, selling every one of us cars. This town's infrastructure is shot. What infrastructure was there is shot. Ellsworth has zero money to do anything about it. I have sixty-six hundred square foot down there. I put the storage units in there, because it's the only thing that could afford to go in there. You can't put a store in there, grocery store, with a huge mortgage, running those coolers, the air conditioning, the, the bills there were ridiculous. We are fortunate that the Dollar General has the pockets to, to come to a town like Ellsworth. I know there's mixed feelings about it, but without them, we would have nothing, because no one, mom and pop stores are disappearing all over the country, because of this technology, the ease of access. We all wanna support local businesses, but when, when they're not there, they're not there. We can't bring in local businesses to my property, because we're waiting on drainfields. The gold nuggets in desperate need, and this township hall sits on a, a tank that was put in, you know, in the fifties. The restaurant needs a drainfield. Ellsworth needs help, it needs all these people coming together and working for the best of everyone to make that possible. Central Lake is very fortunate to have Chris Corbett pumping the money into that town, and we are fortunate enough to have him investing in our community, and it's guys like that that we need. I'm afraid without him, Central Lake would look just like Ellsworth with all the closed buildings, because people can't afford it. It's, it's, it's very difficult times that we're living in, and although zoning may be a part of that, I don't think it's the, the overall that's driving people away. Anyone that started a business knows it's not easy, there's papers involved, there's legal advice, depending on the scale of the company. You know, it can be very burdensome, but what is the payoff, I mean, yeah, so?
Anybody else?
I'd just say for, as a, as just being in these meetings, as a, coming as a resident, is what I see is there's just a divide, neither side are willing to come, meet the other middle. You've got people that, oh, zoning is great, we need it, and it has to stay this way. And aren't willing to bend, or aren't willing to, at the board meeting last night that I sat through the whole thing, you had two of the board members, or one board member make a motion to, hey, let's go through and revise it and make workable for everybody. That got backed by one person, one person, nope, zoning. One person, nope, zoning's great, we gotta keep it, we're not gonna change anything. Other members, nope, get rid of it totally. There's no compromise. It's either my way or the highway, and that's what's dividing everybody not willing to come together and say, okay, I might not like what you're doing, but yeah, you can do it a couple, this little bit, let's limit it, and it's okay. It's nope, we don't want that, so we're gonna make it too restrictive, or you're my neighbor, so I'm gonna fight tooth and nail, so you can't do that. That's what I see. Nobody's willing to make compromise to be inconvenienced a little bit. It's, I don't want to be inconvenienced at all, or I want to do everything, and that's not how it used to be around here.
All right, that concludes our meeting. We will resume again on November eighteenth, and at that meeting, we will be holding a public hearing, so it'll be really important for you all to come, make your voices for the event. Thank you, everyone. Wait, I need a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.